To order being City Council, uh, January ninth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. I call this meeting to order. Our second item on the agenda is invocation that will be given to us by today by Pastor Renee Phillips, A River of Hope. Then it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge given to us by Councilmember Swann. Everyone can wishing to join us in a moment of prayer can do so voluntarily by standing up. Pastor?
Thank you for asking me to come. Let's pray. Father God, we're so grateful for this city that we live in. We ask you, Lord, to just bless it. Give the council direction. Give them peace. Help them, Father God, to follow your way and no other. Lord, I pray that you would use this council for your glory and help them to bring glory to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Everyone, there you go. Everyone be seated. So we have a few items today on our item four proclamation, presentations, and awards. So we're going to be doing a few of them. We're going to be doing, uh, get situated. There's been several times when I turn it and everything goes flying off the podium. Uh, school board, is the school board in, uh, in the house? School board members? Someone will be?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So on the first item is ECISD Board Recognition Month proclamation. So they'll be watching it through our CCTV. City of Odessa would like to proclaim, whereas the mission of our public schools is to meet the educational needs of all our children, to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. Whereas the local school board members are elected by their community members to do what's best for our students. And whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas our local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas that school system, the board members are strong advocates for public education, are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district and the public and the public's expectations of its district. Now therefore, I, Javier Hoven, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of this wonderful city of Odessa, Texas, do here by proclaiming that January twenty twenty-four as ECISD Board Recognition Month. So throughout the city, I urge all our citizens to join me and this council and the city of Odessa in recognizing the dedicated hard work of our local school board members in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today and tomorrow. Just give them a round of applause. Okay, now we're coming to the fun stuff. So in, in the chamber today, everybody's joining us, the parade winners of our fabulous Christmas parade. First of all, I want to be able to recognize our city staff. Ms. Prieto, can you come up forward? She's going to help me. Ms. Prieto is our director of downtown Odessa Incorporated. And this is the person that's working very hard to make these things happen. Let's give her a round of applause. I think, I think every other hour she quit. But, uh, so we're going to recognize our Christmas parade, uh, parade winner, so bear with us.
All right, we're going to start with our commercial businesses. A third place went to, um, American Eagle. Do we have anybody here from American Eagle? There we are. Our second place went to Uno Hot Shot Services Incorporated. I don't know if anybody made it from here. And then we have first place to Hip Hop and Littos by Leah Robinson.
They'll be doing a little dance for us too.
Now, third place for nonprofit, it went to Odessa Oilers, but they did tell me they were not going to be here today. Our second place went to the City of Odessa.
Hey, hey.
Landon.
Oh, Landon, they're maybe behind the curtain.
And first place went to Revolution, which we have right here. He's going to come around. Our third category was the schools. Third place went to Ector Cheerleaders. Second place went to ECISD Special Olympics. Our first place for the school division was OC Tech Spirit Club. We did have an individual family category. It went to Chris and Elizabeth Munoz, but they were not able to make it tonight.
So January is Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your foundation?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, my name's Katrina Bustos and this is Jeanette Gilbert. We are representing Odessa and we're trying, we're representing, or the Cecil Foundation. We're trying to build a safe home for girls seventeen and younger who has been rescued from sex trafficking here in the Permian Basin. There isn't a, a safe home for them here in the area, so we are trying to build one for them. Yes, uh, Odessa ranks number five as far as, uh, sex trafficking and Texas ranks number two.
Yes, so this is a very severe problem that is affecting us here at home. This is not somewhere, somewhere else. This is our backyard. And this is why it's been a priority for the city staff, the city council, our, my office. And so this is why we continue to bring this awareness because it affects us all at all levels. So the city of Odessa would like to proclaim, whereas human trafficking is a public health issue, crimes that affects individuals, it affects families, and especially it affects communities across generations. It exploits most vulnerable among us, weakening our collective and well-being. And whereas human trafficking is defined by the Trafficking Victims Protection Act, it is a commercial sex act induced by force, fraud, or coercion, or when a person induced to perform such an act that is not yet eighteen years old, or the recoupment, harboring, transportation, provision, obtaining of a person for labor, labor services through the use of force, fraud, coercion, for the purpose of subjugating to involuntary, voluntarily servitude, penage, debt, bondage, and even slavery. And whereas an estimated twenty-seven point six million people are subject to human trafficking globally, including the cases of human trafficking reported in every state, territory, across the United States. And whereas people can be trafficked in person and online in industries such as restaurants, cleaning services, construction, factories, and by strangers or someone they know, including partners, parents, and other family members. And whereas human trafficking is preventable by building individual community, societal understanding, and resilience, reducing social inequities, and adjust, addressing the social detriments of health. Now therefore, I, Javier Hoven, by the authority vested in me as mayor of this city of Odessa, Texas, do here proclaim that January twenty twenty-four as the Human Trafficking Prevention Month. So please, throughout the city of Odessa, I urge all citizens to support the efforts of address human trafficking, make resources available to assist in individuals, communities that have experienced human trafficking, build a public and private partnership to increase the capacity to support comprehensive and strategic responses as we do today with these individuals that are doing so in human trafficking. Let's give them a round of applause for what they did. And please spread the word. Okay, now becomes the boring part of our session. We're actually going to get into business. All the fun stuff is over. So I'm going to ask anyone that doesn't want to stay for the regular meeting, like a parade winner, things of that nature, this is the time to get up and to go ahead and excuse themselves. And we'll give you some time before we commence our meeting. Because there's nothing more that will put you to sleep as a council meeting. A cure for insomnia. Any citizen that wishes to comment on non-agenda items can do so by coming forward, filling out a, uh, a request form to speak, by posting your name and full name and only your name. And you have three minutes. I will address the council on any non-agenda items. We cannot respond, but we can direct, uh, staff to, uh, address any said issue that is not on the agenda. You can do so by coming forward. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before, during, or consideration of said item. We'll move on to item five, the consent agenda. Now we'll ask the council to review and entertain a motion to approval as presented.
With approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson for approval, second by Councilmember Vasquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to the regular item agenda, item six. Consider renaming San Antonio Street Dr. J. Naidu Street from Dr. Hemet Henley Street to Single Highway one ninety-one approximately eight hundred and fifty feet. Councilmembers.
Good evening, good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending. And tonight is a big night for myself as well as it is for Dr. Naidu. I just want to give a summary because he's done so much for our community. Dr. J. Naidu obtained his degree from Gunter Medical College in Andhra, India, and has completed his residency in internal medicine at A.C. Logan Memorial Hospital in New York. Dr. Naidu has received many honors and awards. He has received the Best Community Physician Educator, Family Practice from Texas Tech Health Science Center, as well as the Best Physician by the Odessa American Writers' Choice in two thousand and one. In two thousand and two, he's received the Heritage Award Foundation for the Outstanding Citizen in philanthropy and self above self, or service above self, sorry, by the Rotary Club in Odessa. In two thousand and five, Dr. Naidu was inducted into the Odessa Chamber of Hall, Chamber Commerce Hall of Fame as a bright government by the Friends of India as well. He is a distinguished fellow from TTHCS. He has so many honors and contributions to the city of Odessa. I don't know if very many of you know how many doctors that Dr. Naidu and his family have brought to our community. And the first four or five rows as representative of physicians here in our community. We're so thankful for what he has done for us. And in doing so, we are going to honor a street in his name. And so tonight before council, I'm bringing for you the first reading tonight to consider naming a street, Dr. J. Naidu, and I would like for him and his wife to come up and say a few words, please.
Heartfelt gratitude and thanks to the mayor of Odessa and also honorable council for this honor endowing on me. This is my adopted city. I have been here for forty-eight years. Most of my life been spent in Odessa. And this is going to be my place even my last breath. That's what I elected because the people are so precious here. And I really enjoyed staying here. I am the oldest physician at eighty-one years still practicing. And I want to practice more, that's my passion. I also worked for the Texas Medical Board, which is a voluntary thing until twenty twenty-seven, appointed by the governor, and I would like to fulfill that responsibility. And, uh, my wife has been a big support and backbone for me during all these years. I had ups and downs with my health. But the reason I stay here is the medical community. We had the excellent medical community in Odessa. And, uh, when I had a cancer, I stayed here. When I had other problems, I stayed here. I recovered and I'm standing straight and still practicing. Thank you.
We love Odessa. People are so friendly and this is like extended family to us. Thank you very much.
We are going to honor, we are going to take a vote on this and we are going to honor you with this tonight. And so I move to make the motion to consider J.B. Naidu as an official street.
I so second.
We have a motion and a second on item six to consider the renaming of San Antonio Street to Dr. J. Naidu Street from Dr. Hemet Henley Street and to Single Highway one ninety-one. All those in favor indicate by a vote of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Now to Dr. Naidu, I don't know if you've been informed, but city manager, engineering, and the street department have now indicated to me that eight hundred and fifty feet is now your responsibility to maintain. We're going to move on to item seven. Consider approving the memorandum of understanding with Ector County, MOU with Ector County for sharing the sales tax and newly annexed property. Mr. Jones?
Counsel, I believe Judge Fawcett is here. He may want to come up and speak on this, but what we have before you is, uh, the MOU that we discussed here a couple of months ago. And the commissioners' court has passed it with five years instead of the twenty-five. They wanted to do five years. So, and that was the only change that they made. Of course, we talked about Mr. Thompson's amendment, reasonable time and everything. Of course, that's in there, but what we have before you is five years, same MOU practically.
I'd like to recognize our, uh, Ector County Judge Dustin Fawcett. He is in the crowd. Judge? There you go, the other way, yeah. It's all right, we all make that mistake.
Makes sense. Well, mayor, council members, uh, I'm excited that we are bringing this again before you with the amended changes. I'm proud that we passed this out of commissioners' court. We know that this has been a long and contested issue. It is one that benefits not only Ector County, not only the city of Odessa, but everybody else in the region too. This is really a promising, uh, you know, proposition that we brought forward, one that benefits everybody. I think that the terms of the agreement are all amenable. The, the timeframe was one that, uh, was our one, you know, small issue. And we brought it down to five years, and I think that's a amicable terms for everybody. But, uh, I appreciate working with all of y'all on this. It's exciting. This is a big step in the right direction for the county and city relations. And we're excited for what may come in the future with this.
Appreciate that. Counsel, do we have any questions?
I would just, I would like to personally thank you and your leadership because we have been working on this agreement for so long. And this is a step in the right direction for the city to be able to move forward and to grow.
It's amicable, amicable for everyone in Ector County.
Absolutely.
It is essential that all our, uh, entities work together. And you're, and it's, and we're seeing it with your leadership. We really thank you for that and, and helping us with that. And the staff, both on the county side and the city side.
And we've already seen, as Denise can attest to, Councilwoman Swann can attest to, we've already seen people say, oh, it's done? Or it's just about done? Great, we're ready to move forward. So that's good. Thank you.
It is big. It's, it's beyond property taxes, beyond sales taxes, this is jobs, this is bringing businesses here. This is perfect for a growing city of Odessa, perfect for a growing Ector County. It's, it's terrific.
Amen. Thank you, Judge. If there's any other discussion or comments, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So, so I move?
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
All right.
Dr. Naidu, do you want to spend the rest of the evening with us? I mean, the council meeting is a sure cure for insomnia. If you guys are willing to leave, we'll go. And you know what? Just tell us where you eat dinner and we'll meet you afterward. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Mike, uh, he's the most negative guy you ever met.
The most what?
Negative.
Really?
Yeah, terrible. But he's, but he's a nice guy, really a nice guy. My, my good friend, Tyler Grimes, we all go to church with, uh, it's a hard place.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item eight, public hearing. Open a public hearing to consider a request from Maria de los Angeles Corales for a zone change from single-family three, single-family residence to District three, two, general residence district on Graham subdivision, block forty-two. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, mayor and council. So Maria de los Angeles is requesting.
Is that on?
Yeah. Can you guys hear now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maria de los Angeles is requesting a zone change from.
Okay, yeah, we can't hear you.
I know. But it's the elevator.
Oh, that's right.
Only got one.
I know, see if I can, I have an elevator.
Fire marshal's going to turn us in. Gary, why didn't you, you didn't put in a request for our puffs?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can we request parachutes if you dropped up here?
Who you man? Not a lot of food up here.
Long rope. A long rope, it's something we can climb down here.
Okay, I think we can hear you now. Go for it.
Third time's a charm, right? So Maria de los Angeles is requesting a zone change, uh, from, um, SF three to GR. Originally, uh, this area was zoned, uh, GR and MH, which allowed for mobile homes. Um, and prior administration, um, created an ordinance number, uh, two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-four to amend our current zoning to become SF three. The purpose for this was because they did a study in the area in where they determined that there were more homes than, uh, mobile homes in the, in that area of study. So they voted in order to change it to single-family home. When that happened, it prevented now for, uh, mobile homes or, uh, manufactured homes to come into this area. Um, and therefore, the applicant, in order for her to place her, um, new home in here, which is a manufactured home, um, it, but based on the current zoning, it is not allowed. Um, we did do a study, a field. We did do a study, a field, just to kinda understand the dynamics that was going there, if it had changed from two thousand eighteen to today. And from our study, just on the two blocks there, we have all even addresses that have twenty houses and four mobile homes. And then we have the odd numbers that have twenty-four houses and two mobile homes. So in reality, you're seeing single-family homes placed in these lots compared to mobile homes. The, one of the biggest challenges that we're seeing is that based on our codes, when people are, we do allow modular homes, which are a prefabricated house that can be placed in these lots. And so there's a difference between modular homes and manufacturer homes. So the, based on definition, the modular homes is going to be houses that are built onsite and have a foundation. And there can be like prefab walls, but they're being built there and we're still doing the inspection. Compared to a modular, manufacturer home in where these are mobile home kinda styles, they're built out somewhere else and they're brought in and they're placed there in their transition houses and they can be moved. So that's the difference of what's happening. And so when, sometimes when they go and purchase a modular or manufacturer home, they don't know the difference. The difference is based on a label and how it's being built, onsite or offsite. And then if it has a sticker that it's HUD approved or if it's based on TDLR. And so in addition to that, this, this law, when was it, in two thousand twenty-three? No, sorry, in three eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, it actually had a house there and it was demolished, perhaps by previous owner. So then now that it got sold, now it has the ability to either do a modular home or a single-family home. So that brings us to today, in where the applicant is requesting for a new zoning to go back to GR in order for her to put her manufacturer home. PNZ did deny this, so they're recommending a denial to you. And staff is also recommending a denial to this, so.
What were the reasons that PNZ denied it?
Because it's not, it's going against what was adopted from the prior administration based on the new ordinance that came and because you're seeing more of single-family homes in that area compared to mobile homes.
Does this person own that property?
Right now, yes.
And she's being denied, or PNZ denied the opportunity for her to move in a mobile home?
And she already, she was not, she didn't know about this? So she purchased the mobile home thinking that she wasn't gonna be able to move into it.
So let me ask a question. What's the TDLR?
That's.
Texas Department of Life and Regulation, it's a study.
So what does that, okay, so is it, the study of what?
Well, they're, they're actually.
Here, that's why they.
They're actually built by different codes. Mobile homes and manufactured homes are built under the, one code, it's two thousand fifteen code. A modular home is built under today's code. A modular home is the same as a stick-built home, it's a permanent deal. A mobile home, if you read on the internet, it tells you a mobile home, you get a title with it. It's like a RV or whatever, basically.
One's got wheels and one doesn't.
Right. It's on a chassis, it's on steel, it can be.
Yeah, let, let, we'll give you a second. Go ahead.
But like I said, a modular home is built under today's codes. It's assembled on site, it's a permanent foundation, you know, when it's done, it's a, it's just like a stick-built home. It's a permanent situation.
So this one allows for modular homes to be placed in any zoning.
This is our coordinate.
Our, ours, we go by these as well.
Okay.
Because like I was explaining, a modular home wouldn't be allowed in any zoning, but it has to have a foundation.
Okay, so the difference between industrialized modular and homes and manufactured homes, right now we have a manufactured home, correct?
Correct.
The primary differences between the industrialized modular home and the manufactured are following. The codes to which the homes are built, a modular housing in the state of Texas constructed to the same codes as site-building house. Manufactured houses constructed to a federal HUD code standard. Modular homes must be installed on a permanent foundation system. Titles are not issued for a modular home. Once installed, the home becomes part of the real property, becomes permanent.
That's right.
Municipal may not differentiate between modular home built under the Texas IHB program and site-built house. So when a manufactured built off-site, we don't know if it's been inspected by a licensed, a master plumber, electrician, or no?
Yes, sir. A manufactured home is built in a factory under the jurisdiction of a engineer. It's built to a different standard though. It's built to the two thousand fifteen HUD code. A modular home is built to the current codes and inspected on site and it's built to the, whatever your current codes. If we were under the twenty-four codes, it'd be built to today's code. And like I said, permanent foundation.
Twenty eighteen. We're on twenty eighteen codes.
Yeah, we're on the, I said if we were under the twenty-four, but we are under the twenty eighteen.
We're under twenty eighteen.
What would happen if she set that manufactured home on a slab?
Good question.
I don't know how you could do it. You could take the wheels off of it, but how, I mean, how you.
There's no way to, to.
I'm just, I'm just asking a question, I don't know.
Right, yeah, I said, I'm not sure exactly how you could do that. I mean, I guess you could take the wheels off of it and skirt it and make it look respectable, but.
Ken, I have a question. In this first picture that you're showing us up there, is that?
This is her, her lot.
Right, and there's a mobile home to the.
There's a mobile home right there.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. It's like there, there's four. We don't know if those homes, mobile homes were put there when the transition happened to go into SF three. So they were already mobile homes in this area, but to the ratio of how they were, it's very different. So they were trying to create a different, like kinda change the area by allowing more, dedicating more single-family homes.
Have we had any response from the residents?
We didn't have, we sent out thirteen and only one was returned.
What was the one?
No.
Just one?
Yeah.
One out of thirteen?
Yes.
Okay. You wanna hear from the homeowner?
Yes, I do.
Just, everyone, if you, if you don't mind, speak into the microphone. And also just introduce yourself, first thing and last thing.
Yes, my name is Maria Carrasco.
Thank you.
And I work for Clayton Homes. This is Ms. Corrales, she's the homeowner, and Mr. Corrales. So in the sense of the manufactured home and the modular homes, these modular homes where they're saying to where it's built on site, they are not built on site. Modular homes do come with wheels and axles to your site. They take out, they talk, they take out the wheels and axles and they put them on a foundation.
Okay.
We can do the exact same thing with a manufactured home.
Okay.
Wheels and axles come off, the anchors come off, everything, and it is gonna be a, a regular site-built home.
I get you. We're not debating the wheels or not, but we just gotta go off of what this says.
Yes, sir.
And, and so, and that's, that's, that's what we gotta go by and what our staff is telling us.
Yes.
None of us here are experts on the modular, manufactured, things of that nature. And so we have to go based on what this, this information. Anybody on the council, do you have any questions for the homeowners?
Not necessarily for the homeowners, but I, I get the, I get the premise for changing the zoning, is trying to get more, more houses in the city limits because of the property value. That's, that's the main reason, I'll say. But in this case, whenever there's already a mobile home that's gonna be her neighbor, and there's one, I saw one on the west side and then the north side and the south side of this property, I mean, they're already all around there. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna really change the value of that property any because, and I just, I would just, also, I just hate for the monetary loss of this. I mean, they already have this property and they already, they already bought the manufactured home too. What again, what would happen if this is not approved?
Let me talk to the homeowners. You're, you're the salesperson. Hablan inglés o español?
Español.
Okay, so I'm gonna interpret. And I've got wit.
Promise?
You can, I'll always interpret and I'm pretty accurate at it.
That's not according to Lisbon.
Déjeme preguntarle una pregunta.
Sí.
A un punto en tiempo, cuando comprates la casa, este nunca se informaron a venir a hablar con la ciudad. Nadie les platicó que, hey, need to have a look, see if it's, 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 it's. Let, let her answer. So cuando, cuando. Bueno, ustedes tenían una casa en esa propiedad. Eran dueños de la casa. Y lo atumbaron o compraronle a terreno así en la casa.
No, apenas hace seis meses que compramos nosotros ahí.
La propiedad.
Yo vivo enfrente.
Ah, okay.
Yo vivo la trece dieciséis de la game.
You touched, touched a cross.
Estoy enfrente, entonces lo pusieron forseo, entonces nosotros lo compramos. Pero yo tengo ahí como veinticinco años en esa calle.
Cuántos años?
Veinticinco años en esa calle.
Okay.
El terreno es mío, pero la trila no es mía. Entonces cuando yo miré que ese terreno se vendía, yo dije es bueno para poner una trila más grande.
So you live, you know, the trila.
Sí, yo vivo una trila.
And so that, that trila y ese propiedad, lo compraron y ponieron veinticinco años antes que compraran esto. So they live on the block, they live right across the street.
Right.
And they've been there for twenty-five years and they own the property and the trailer across the street. So when this came available, they bought it. So usted, usted nunca supieron que había un cambio in las relaciones como de, 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 antes de dos mil dieciocho?
No.
Cuando fueron y compraron la trila, nunca les informaron de eso. So it goes back to, we have to educate the public. Because what's happening? Lo que está pasando en muchos casos, que el intento para vender propiedades, casas, negocios, todo ese tipo, todos están, tienen sus trabajos de vender y cambiarle entre cambios y todo, pero una cosa que nadie se está educando, cómo se está cambiando las reglas en la Ciudad de Odessa y estamos más modernos. Este, antes estábamos en dos mil tres, ahora estamos en dos mil dieciocho, a un punto, a un punto que muerto la regla es de dos mil veinte, veintiuno, veintidós, veintitrés. Y por eso están, estarán nosotros a educar el público, esos que están viniendo, nos están viniendo. What I'm explaining to her, like I explained earlier when we were talking about the impact figures. It's based upon our responsibility to try to educate the public as best as possible. Because what's happening is people who sell property, sell manufactured homes, sell businesses, sell pads, they're gonna do their job. You're gonna sell. But not all the times are you informed on what's changing here at the city and this happens. And so we have to weigh, and we're not the bad guys here, we just have to weigh what's going on in the committee. No hay otra cosa que los quieras a platicar de lo que está pasando en esta ciudad, show. No hay nada que quieren a, a, a informar al Consilio.
Bueno, sí, una de las cosas principales, como dijo mi esposa, tenemos prácticamente como veintiocho años viviendo aquí en, en Odessa. Y uno de los sueños de ella era tener su double wipe. Es not exactly, double wipe es, es, es a big one.
Okay.
Double wipe, you know? En, ella quería, ese, uno de los sueños de ella. Entonces, eh, nos tocó la oportunidad de que tuvimos ese, eh, que nos vendieran ese, ese lote, pero nunca supimos. O sea, nunca nos, nunca nos, nos, I mean, y change the.
Si, él le dijo que ese tipo de casa no podía por las reglas.
Entonces, a mí me hubiera gustado irme para el pueblo porque a mí me gustan los caballos, me gusta el rancho.
Sí.
Pero ella dice, no, puedes que yo para, allá no.
Aquí hay.
Vamos a hacer esto.
Aquí hay agua.
Sí. Entonces, dije vamos, vamos a informarnos a ver qué lo queremos. Entonces, eh, Charo nos hizo la, el favor, nos dio la oportunidad de trabajar con ella para poder, este, aplicar para, para la trila. Entonces, una trila que, pues prácticamente es una casa. Yo digo que es una casa porque vale doscientos mil dólares. No es cualquier casa. Entonces, nos dio, nos tocó la oportunidad de que nos compramos ese lote. Entonces, nunca nos, también fue, fue uno de nosotros porque pensamos, hay trailers alrededor del, del barrio. Hay trailers, entonces nosotros nunca nos pusimos a pensar. Sí, son dos trailers que, la que.
Déme explicarle al Consilio que está. So for twenty-eight years, they've lived here in Odessa and it's always been a dream for her, for the spouse to be able to have a, it's not a double wipe, but pretty close to it. So they had the opportunity, they went in through the application process, but they, what basically they did, like every other citizen in City of Odessa, is they look at the neighborhood, well, there's a trailer, no big deal, we'll just put another trailer. Nobody realizes that as we move forward, this is something that the city is trying to mitigate. And, and so what happens is a lack of information, knowledge, and education, which always continues. And once again, we just, we're dealing with across the board. And so this is what they're explaining. Bueno, lo, lo que le falta terminamos, si no podemos seguir. Que, 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 que donde dice.
Well, pues, eh, no queremos, ustedes saben, cambiar leyes, ni cambiar nada, simplemente queremos, eh, abusar de su buen corazón, de que nos puedan dar la oportunidad de, de sentar ahí porque, pues hemos vivido muy a gusto. Inclusive, en la casa de frente, eh, vive Don Tino Ramos, los, los hijos y los nietos de él son, trabajan DPS y trabajan y nos llevan muy bien con toda la, lo que, este, en ese, en ese barrio, nos hemos llevado muy bien con la gente y viven muy a gusto.
Ya, tiene veinticinco años ahí.
Ya. Entonces, estamos muy a gusto y por eso, este, como le digo, no queremos abusar, ni queremos, este, cambiar nada, simplemente que nos den la oportunidad. Es una trila, es una, I mean, es algo, un sueño de, de ella y nos.
It's a two hundred thousand dollar trailer and they're not asking for, you know, for us to change laws or procedures and policies, they're just asking, they're appealing to our goodwill and our heart to consider it. They've lived there for twenty-five years, they lived in Odessa twenty-eight. The house that we're seeing is family Ramos. A lot of them are in law enforcement and they live peacefully in the neighborhood. So they're just asking for consideration of this problem. Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it to the, to the council to ask any questions, discussion.
So I live in this, this neighborhood over here. I have a house and every time a trailer moves in, my house values drop that much more. How much more are we gonna punish the west side with the houses dropping by putting trailers in? How much more are you gonna punish west Odessa?
How, how close are you, are they to your house?
Hmm, two blocks, three blocks.
So is the house located on North Eighth Street?
It's on South Allegheny.
Allegheny.
Off of Clements.
Yeah, it's right off of.
This is on the south side?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you live over there.
From the south side.
Apologize.
Yeah.
I have, I have the same thing in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
I have three trailers piled around in my house, at my house.
This is South Allegheny, South Clements.
I apologize.
This is in District One.
It's in District One, it's my district, yeah.
But again, that's gonna drive the prices of houses. I know that picture they saw, that, that house that's sitting there, it would be worth more money than what they're gonna put in there.
Now, now, I get that argument, but another kicker to this is there were thirteen notices sent out to the neighbors and only one was returned. Now, whether they didn't send it back for whatever reason, that's still saying that twelve people approve of this trailer going in. So, I mean, I just, that's, that's where I stand on this.
Any other, any other discussion, comments?
The one thing that comes to my mind is the pre-existing mobile homes in the area. They're already there.
They're already there.
And then, and another thought that I would have, I don't know what the possibility would be, but instead of changing zoning for the entire area, that I think the city council has the ability to make exceptions as they're brought to council.
This is an appeal.
And this would be a good one.
This is an appeal process. And so you're absolutely right about that.
I'm pretty much with, with Councilman Motta, that thirteen notices were sent out and if people really cared, you know, it's, it's just the way it is, the way, that's just the way the town's developed. I mean, I've been here all my life and I've watched it and I understand the concern and the house values, but I, you know, these folks have been evidently good citizens for a long time and have invested in the city and in the property and I'm kinda with Councilman Motta on this one.
And I did have a developer come to me last year wanting to develop affordable housing with mobile homes. Said they're gonna be very nice, we got, I got this land out there. And I told him no to that because any, any new builds, anything like that, of course, we want single-family homes. But in these infill lots like this, this is like Councilman, Councilman Cornell was saying, this has gotta be an exception to this. I mean, there's already, they're already, they're already in one currently and there's already, there's already somewhere around there, so, yeah, I think this is, definitely get this passed.
Okay.
And I'm like, I'm like Councilman Motta, again, or Councilman Cornell, I wouldn't wanna change the zoning, just make an exception. We have that privilege.
But this is for a zone change.
Well, I know, but can we bring it back and make an exception?
So we can't do a special exception because we cannot use our code that way.
With M- MCHS. ARPA funds has fit very well with this. It's a much-needed facility. And right now, the closest that we can go to with any kind of mental health is Big Spring. It's always cool. One of the really big things that this does, though, is the emergency that we have at this new facility. It allows us to take these cases there instead of going straight to the hospital with them. It's a very good use of ARPA funds. I appreciate Mr. Tippin being here this evening and other representatives from the hospital. If you have any questions, I'm sure they'll be able to answer them, probably much more eloquently than I can.
I want to be able to recognize our CEO from Medical Center Health System is Russell Tippin. We do have our hospital board. And so, Mr. Tippin, if you want to come and make that presentation, introduce the hospital board, if you don't mind, and everyone from MCH, and then be able to talk to us about this project and the foundation.
Thank you, City Council and the mayor for having us again here tonight. Let me just introduce some of the, we have a few of our board members in the audience tonight, and I'd like to recognize them. We'll start with our board chair, Mr. Wallace Dunn is here. It's also his birthday, so we'll take care of that later.
Happy birthday.
Don Hallmark, Will Kapoff is here, and Kathy, right here, Kathy Rhodes is right here.
Let's make a note that they're all sitting separate, so there is no, there is no quorum.
There is no quorum.
Okay? Let me repeat that for all those in Arizona, there is no quorum with the MCH.
That's right.
They've also got their attorney.
And they have their attorney here.
Attorney Steve is here. We also have, Bryn Dodd is not here tonight. Also, we have Richard Herrera, who is also on our board. He is not here tonight, and we're missing one more.
David Dunn.
David Dunn is not here tonight, thank you.
David's been on there so much, you forget about him.
Yes. I do have Ms. Praden, Allison Praden is here. She is our president of our foundation, the Medical Center Foundation, which, as y'all know, does a lot of great work, especially for things like Children's Miracle Network and other programs like that. What we talked about tonight, and man, I appreciate the work that we've been able to do together, is this is by far the biggest unaddressed need in the Permian Basin is behavioral health. And this is a big project, and definitely the people that our city police pick up, our sheriff's department, people who walk in the door. We all know somebody in our families or in our friends that the mental health need is great, and this would be a huge investment in that. And it's, and again, it's not something you're doing today. It's the long-term effect of this. And y'all know, and I know too, that dealing with the patient is one thing, but if you don't put the patient back in a good situation, you're just, you're just doing it over and over. And this facility is going to address all of it, children to adults, families, patients, all of it. So, I agree with you, sir, that this is a great, this lines up great with the ARPA money. And I just want to tell y'all, on behalf of myself and our board and the hospital and the citizens of the Permian Basin, we thank you for this consideration, and this will go a long way to getting this project finished. So, it's, it's getting, the project's getting bigger. Started as a hundred beds, now it's two hundred beds. The ground is broke. There is work going on as we speak, but, and we're not done, we're not done yet. There's, there's still more fundraising to do, but this would be a huge step in that direction. And you, this group will be the first government body to put money into this project, the first. So, thank you for that, thank you for taking the lead on that.
Counsel, any questions, discussion?
I guess I had one. You did touch on it and mention it, but it could be used as an alternate for OPD, for that very, very special case that really needs psychiatric attention compared to just being locked up. The possibility is.
It, it, you know, there's medical clearance and things like that, but absolutely, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's what we're after. That's what we're targeting is. Right now, the majority of emergency psychiatric, mental health, behavioral health care is taking place in the emergency rooms of the hospital in the Permian Basin. Not just here, the whole Permian Basin. That is not the, that is not a good environment for that to happen. We need to change that, and that's what, that's what this project aims to do. Sound good?
That'll free up a lot of room for you as well.
Absolutely, I will, absolutely.
I will have to tell everybody that I think last week our furnace went out, and we were waiting for parts. I think the parts came in, because it's extremely hot in here. Counsel, do we have any questions? Mr. Tippin, if council is to approve this, the money will go where, a million dollars?
Yeah, that money will, that's why Allison is here. We will direct those funds into that, our foundation, which our foundation has been around for twenty, it's been around a long time. And that, and that way, the transition will be smooth, and then that foundation will direct those funds to the behavioral health, and it will cycle through that way. I don't want you to think it's going to get lost in our budget or in the CEO slush fund. It's not going to go in there. There is no such thing, by the way. But we will direct those through, through our foundation, and that way, it is very clean, it's very accountable. You can see every dime where it goes.
I will ask for a footnote by our city secretary, make sure that Russell Tippin was actually joking, there is no slush fund in there.
No such thing. But we'll work on it.
The foundation has done good work. I, you know, they've been around at least since ninety-one, since I went on the hospital board. But they do great work, they always have done great work, and do what they say they're going to do. I hope they're still slushed now as they were.
They are.
Because we had, when I was on the board, we had to spend some money, because the IRS said, "Too much." Anyway, so, but this will go in as a donation from the Medical Center Hospital Foundation to the behavioral health science.
Yes, sir. But we satisfy, if the council considers that our donation will be to our local hospital.
Yes.
What they choose to do with it, and beyond that, is the hospital, not the city.
I just want to make sure, Mayor, you can follow the money, that's what we want to make sure.
Yes, sir, that's all we ask for.
The other question is this, to Dan Jones, Kelly, is that once we, if the council goes forward with this, do we consider it not only committed but spent?
Yes, so from our perspective, and what we're required to do, once the money goes out, it is spent, and it's gone.
Mr. Tippin, the only thing I request is make sure that you don't leave it at the bottom of any safe. And I think everybody up here knows what I'm talking about.
We will cash it immediately.
Yeah, please. Mr. Tippin, there's nothing, anything else? Does anybody on the board want to address? Well, if you, if you keep talking, you'll oversell it. That's a good salesman, always say that.
True, true.
Counsel, if there's any more discussion or any more comments, I'll entertain a motion for item eleven.
Show move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cornell for approval, second by Councilmember Haney, to consider allocating one million dollars from ARPA funds to Medical Center Health System for Mental Health. All those in favor indicating by saying aye, and all those opposing indicating by saying no. Motion passing your hands, congratulations. Item twelve, discuss and consider use of ARPA funds for the free clinic for early diabetes detection. So, I've asked my doctor, Rashamet Aganti, to be able to be here tonight, but he got stuck in Houston. And so, if anything, he's barely landing. So, three years ago, I got together with Dr. Shamataganti and the other Dr. Benedict Mendley, what was his name? A Spanish doctor, correct? He was part of the Dean for Health, Texas Tech. Fortunately, he passed earlier this year. All three of us got together. During that time, I was, I was not in remission for cancer, and I had gone through diabetes. And so, I reached out to them and asked them, "What can we do for preventative care and education?" So, I was misdiagnosed since I was forty-two. At fifty-two, fifty-four, I was, I went through diabetes, got rid of that. And on that day is when they, I commenced my journey for prostate cancer. Everybody knows that I lost my dad here in September. But as I lost my mom, my dad was going through it unknowingly. And so, we both went through the cancer at the same time, as we grieved our family. So, and talked to these doctors, they made us aware that one, the huge pandemic before COVID was diabetes, high blood pressure, hypertension, cholesterol. During the COVID, a majority of men were Hispanic or Latino, from thirty-four to fifty-four, seventy-eight percent of them died, not because of COVID, but the underlying conditions. Everybody here in the hospital dealt with it throughout the whole thing. And then it got put on the back burner, then we lost Benedict Mendley. And I talked to my doctor, Rashamet Aganti, and he apologized for dropping the ball. So, they opened up a clinic in Midland, both myself and hospital board, Kathy Rhodes, we went and visited, saw it. We found an angel investor that was making commitments. We did have meetings, since then, they disappeared. So, the need is still there. So, tonight, I'm asking whoever's going to represent and talk about the clinic, and what, not only why the need, because we have someone that works out of the Midland Clinic, and then what the hospital's willing to commit. So, introduce yourself and talk about what you do in Midland and the clinic.
Good evening, my name's Rebecca Redfern. I am the coordinator for Texas Tech Health Sciences Center. I was in charge of starting the free clinic in Midland County. It started as a dream of our chair for internal medicine, Dr. Shamataganti, because there is a great need. Most of the Permian Basin is uninsured and just have lack of healthcare. And so, we have a lot of patients that use our emergency rooms as primary healthcare. And so, they realize that their health is important. There's just nowhere for them to go, they can't afford it. There's no low-cost clinics. Some of these patients can't even afford a low-cost clinic. And so, he brought this idea to us about two years ago. We worked together with MMH at that time, and kind of our reasoning for that is to take some of the caseload off of the hospital, because a lot of our patients are using this as primary care. And so, or for follow-up care, for things that aren't emergent, that don't need to be taken care of at an emergency room, simple things like just diabetes care, or even something simple as, "Oh, I've got this cut," or, I don't know, "I think I have the flu." And so, they're going to the hospital instead of going to clinics. So, we started this clinic August of last year. And so, at that time, we've seen about six hundred and fifty new patients. That being said, returning appointments aren't counted into that census, but we have a bunch of patients that come in and we see them on a three-month basis, or if we're seeing them for establishing care, which most of them are, we see them on a monthly basis. And it's definitely cut down on MMH's responsibility to our community, also because we see a bunch of their hospital follow-ups that don't need to go back for stitch removal, or, "Hey, yes, you had this broken bone, but really, you just need to follow up with a primary care physician." And so, we've taken on that caseload for a primary care physician. In Midland, our criteria is you just have to be uninsured. So, we see undocumented, uninsured and above eighteen. And because it's internal medicine run, so we're not trained in pediatrics. And there's a free clinic or a low-cost clinic in Midland for pediatric care. But that's the case that we've taken on in the Midland Clinic. And we've seen a great outpouring of support from our community, as well as Midland Memorial supported us in imaging. We also are setting up a pharmacy right now, so that our patients can get help with their medication. So, as of right now, Casa de Amigos is where we're located in Midland, and Casa de Amigos is supporting us with grants that they have to help support our patients' medication needs. So, our patients right now are arriving to the clinic, being seen by licensed physicians, training residents. They're being seen by medical students. So, it's not only being used to help our community, it's also being used to help teach our up-and-coming doctors. And so, they're getting experience in, you know, how to take care of patients that are, are not your normal patients, that just come in and can, you can prescribe whatever medicine you want. "Oh, they've got diabetes, give them Manjaro." It costs twelve hundred dollars a month. Like, no, we're having to use alternative medicines and trying to be a little bit more conscious about our efforts with our patients. But the care is just as important, and it's just as high-quality. And so, Midland has taken advantage of that. And being born and raised here in Odessa and knowing the needs that we have, we really, really want to get this done in our own community, in our own backyard, and with the support of Medical Center Hospital. We just need a little bit more help to get up and going, but it's very exciting. It's, it's shown its worth time and time again in Midland. And so, we're just, we would love if Odessa could.
In Midland, there was a seven hundred thousand dollar, not a grant, but it was a donation from a family, in care of a family member.
Yes.
And so, it's, it's named after a certain person.
Yes.
I think that amount was about in excess of seven hundred thousand.
It was put into an endowment.
An endowment. And so, there's a lot of support from Odessa doing that. One of the things is, is that the hospital actually had a program, if I'm correct, where you were doing this, and you were being supported with what's called, I think, a Medicaid eleven fifteen waiver. The hospital had to stop this, and this is why. So, what, in Texas, the eleven fifteen waiver was transformation waiver, provides the federal authority for operations and most state Medicaid managed and care programs. This is one of the programs. It also included STAR, STAR Plus, STAR Kids, and the children dental program. On January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS, approved the ten-year extension of the eleven fifteen transformation waiver. On April sixteenth of twenty twenty-one, CMS rescinded their approval and letter issued on January fifteenth, twenty twenty. Is that correct? Which eliminated the program at Medical Center. So, if it's true of our, if our population is a hundred and twenty thousand inside the city, and there's excess of sixty thousand in the county, as we all predict, that's a lot of people. Eighty-five percent of that is Hispanic or Latino. And so, we have no education going on in the community. I mean, just tonight, we've seen the lack of education and impact fees and simple, just regulation of our ordinances. This has been going on for a long time. And if this, people don't believe this costs us money down the road, it does. Now, I had the privilege to be able to talk to some individuals today, and it's only a knack to God, because they also talked to me about renal denervation procedure. It's something that I know the hospital isn't talking about, but it's something that they are definitely looking into. That may be a common reality. As I, I wound up speaking, I think that in the future, I think the council, with ODC's help, is to really invest not only in research, retention, recruitment of medical personnel, but also medical facilities, not only in this that affects our kidneys, because of what it does build up in the body, but cancer. So, as tonight, as we wind up seeing a lot of, in two weeks, we're going to be looking at projects across the board internally and externally with ARPA funds. I put this item on the agenda. And so, before, before we go further, before I forget, Mr. Tippin, we had conversations. And can you please explain what the commitment from the hospital is would be to this free clinic?
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mayor, for the time. So, when we first started visiting with this and talking with the mayor, Ms. Rhodes, with our board, we have a clinic on Forty-second Street, right just by Permian High School. And when COVID came along, we had to close that clinic and reallocate those resources. That clinic is, we could open it today, we've got equipment, we've got computers, we've got everything, and they're ready to go. I think you two were, did you go down there?
I, I had prior commitments, but we had the, we had the committee that.
Yeah, that group went, Ms. Rhodes went. And so, our, our commitment into this is we will house it right there. And what I like about it is it's ready to go. I mean, it, it's, this isn't, we have to order equipment six, seven months out. We, we could turn the, on, flick the switch on this in a couple of weeks and have this going. Our commitment is the staff to put that in there, the front staff, a nurse, probably a couple nurses in there, and then work with Texas Tech to be able to run the resident doctors through there, to be able to help educate them too, but at the same time. And then let me just put it in a different way. We have clinics here in town called federally qualified health clinic, FQHC. That is intended for your, your lowest-income people. And what we're going to deal with at this clinic is people who are, their income is even lower than that. That some of these people can't even make their way to the FQHC. So, there is a group of citizens out there that this will be another huge move in their healthcare journey. So, our commitment as a board, I mean, as a hospital and from our board, is the Forty-second Street clinic and the staff it takes to put that in there, and what it takes to run that. And it's ready to go. I mean, it's, we have nine rooms in there, they're all staffed, they're ready. And this could be something we could turn the key on pretty darn quick and, and get the, get the word out and get people moving in and out of there pretty quickly. So, I don't think this is an everyday, all-day, every-day clinic. I think you start out at two or three days a week and let that population build up, and then take it from there. Because I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want it to sit there staffed and empty. I want it to be there with a lobby full of people who need, who this is their only way to get healthcare. We're taking care of them, and then we can process them through and hopefully work them into the system where they do work in a FQHC setting. We do get them some education they need. But most importantly, we take care of their problems right now before they end up in the ERs again, and we can take care of them there.
Will this also include the promotion and advertisement in, for our media, Spanish?
Yes, sir.
The mayor said eighty-five percent are Latino men.
Yeah.
Latino, period.
Yeah, we, we will, we will run it through our, and with y'all, and probably with y'all's media department too, just to, you think about the presence with the hospital and the city we have together, how many people will follow our pages or like our Instagram posts? We, we have, we have a large footprint there. So, we will work that through all of the outlets and get that out there, English, Spanish, and any other language we feel that we can serve that population.
I think the initial talk, we were talking about two days, Tuesdays and Thursdays, limited hours, maybe around twenty patients a week, maybe work it to forty if possible.
For, for the Midland Clinic, it's Tuesdays and Thursdays from four to eight p.m. I will say, we didn't do any marketing when we first started. Everything was word of mouth. People are a little bit hesitant, if you can imagine, to trust care. I guess they think it's free, so, "Oh, don't go there," like they're just going to, it's not good care. And so, the, a good night when we first started was five patients a night. Now, we are seeing, we cap at twenty. And so, those twenty patients, they know now that you need to get there early, because we're pretty full by about five. And so, but in the Midland Clinic, we're working with four exam rooms. So, it's a lot smaller. The clinic is not, it's not, it wasn't set up as a medical clinic. We're blessed to be where we're at, so we're not complaining. It's just, this is an actual clinic that is made to handle a large number of patients. But, yeah, the limited hours, and it's in the afternoon, because most of these patients are laborers, and so, they don't get off till late, or they have to tell their boss, like, "I've got to go to the doctor this afternoon, and so, I can't," like, the latest that they can get off, the better for them. And so, that's why our clinic is, we strategically made those hours from four to eight. It's also mirrored off of the free clinic in Lubbock.
Yeah.
So, and that's, that was the Lubbock hour, they're only open one day.
Yeah, and that's actually where it all started. Lubbock had been made a ways down here, and I remember Dr. Shamataganti, and also, what's the other doctor?
Doctor, I just went back, Gregory Martha.
Martha.
Is the director of the clinic.
Well, he used to be my doctor too, and so.
Yeah, and he was also born and raised in, in our area, and just recently moved back specifically to Lubbock.
That guy's really old school. You know, he still uses a little, little stick.
He still has a flip phone.
I want to be able to bring up Kathy Rhodes, her trustee, because I want to be able, we, we talked about another item that she wanted to talk about, and this is an item that we needed during COVID, am I correct?
I'm sorry.
Remember, we had talked, you had talked to me about another piece of equipment, both portable and manual. I can't remember what it was, but it had to do something that we needed during the COVID for, really, do you recall that?
Oh, ECMO.
Yes, ECMO. So, first of all, explain what an ECMO is and why it's necessary.
Oh, gosh. Well, it's got a great, huge name, starting with electrode, but basically, the long and the short of it is, it's used to bypass the failing organs that are, that need to be treated. During, during COVID, a person would be removed. And in fact, Dr. Farber, female, the ophthalmologist, had COVID and was failing. And she was taken out of here on an ECMO, on a portable ECMO unit, and flown into a bigger city. I believe it was Dallas, yes. And her, her system was basically transferred over to the ECMO unit so that her lungs could be treated and she could survive. About fifteen days later, she was brought back here healthy. She shortly thereafter conceived and gave birth to at least two children in the past few years. And so, it's a miraculous process. We did have locally a judge that passed from Andrews, and Mr. Tippin could bring you up to speed on that. And he was ECMOed for his kidneys. He had kidney damage and was taken out of here. But ECMO is an amazing piece of equipment. It is not a recent invention. ECMO came about about forty-plus years ago and was used in a lot of pediatric cases. So, the hospital is, right now, they, we've been approached by Andrews to review ECMO units because of the situation with the judge that passed recently. It is, to me, a very miraculous intervention, but it's been around for forty, forty-plus years. I will say, on going back to the clinic, whereas Midland had seven hundred and fifty dollars, or seven hundred and fifty thousand startup, we already have a clinic in place. They had to build, and that is something that you need to be aware of. So, if you allot money, we're not going to have to do the building. It can be put right into immediate use. There was one more thing I was, that we touched on, on the clinic. To me, it is a, a heart, a heart project. Both my parents were late-onset diabetics, I am a late-onset diabetic. Our family is battled, due to diabetes, battled myriad of situations. The one thing I'm thankful of is that we haven't experienced amputation, but a lot of diabetics experience amputation. One of our prior city councilmen, Berta Calzada, was a drastic diabetic, a brittle diabetic, and she ended up having amputation while she was in office.
Yep.
She lost, I believe, her right leg. So, this is something that's very serious, that we really need to look at as a city, as a county, and as a hospital, to join, to have joint effort on this. ECMO is also imperative. We need to have an ECMO unit for our hospital to transport. And we probably wouldn't maintain them on ECMO at our facility, because it's very costly. But to transfer people out of this area and have them go into a major clinic elsewhere and maintain there until they can come back home, again, it is another one of my, my heart projects. So, I just, I, I really lay it upon you to, to do the best thing by this community, because we really need these projects.
I appreciate you.
Are there any questions you might have?
Any questions?
And I did find out I have torn meniscus today, so that's the walker. I don't normally use a walker.
Hopefully, you're on the school, on the hospital board, maybe you get a discount.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working toward that.
There's got to be a perk somewhere.
Is there anything else that?
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you so much, and for your consideration.
Counsel, I placed this item for discussion and consideration. This morning, I got news of one of my wife's cousins passed away last night. And they too had diabetes. People are dying from diabetes, but they shouldn't be. The reason why this became so passionate to me is when I got diabetes and I didn't know it, I saw a dispensary, no education. Nobody was telling me how to get, how to reverse it. People said, "You can't reverse it." Yes, you can. It just takes information and education. We're ignorant, they're thinking that this is a dead sentence, and it should be. One of my cousins, who I grew up with, lost a limb because of it, and they were able to save the other one. And so, as we had discussed the ARPA funds, I had asked everybody, and I asked the staff to put items on the agenda for every district to consider an ARPA. I didn't place any items, and because this is the one that I'm asking for, as part of a portion that we can divvy up.
So there's six million dollars. I'm asking for five hundred thousand for a seed to be able to create the first free clinic that has been the dream of Dr. Shumantaganti, Dr. Brandon Madley, and many in this community to even have a name for it. I think it's uh, the NCH uh, Clinica de Salud, the amor de salud, something. What is it?
Regalo de salud.
Regalo de salud, uh, uh, a gift of health. And so um, on this item, since I placed it, I'm gonna ask for a motion. I'm going to motion for the approval of um, five hundred thousand dollars for the first free clinic for early diabetes detection. And I will ask for a second, if there is a second.
A second.
I have a motion by the mayor, second by a council member Cornell. All those that favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Or all those opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes uh, unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you for the community. I want to thank you for coming over and being committed to this project. It's been a long, three arduous years. And so I want to congratulate you, Kathy, your leadership, um, and all the, the hospital personnel, especially all the trustees. Thank you very much for continuing. And now we can bring you back to Odessa. You don't have to take that trip to Midland. Thank you very much. Be careful going home. Okay, so we are now moving on to um, item thirteen. Anybody who needs to take a look?
I'm good.
Almost said to make it quick.
Thank you, sir.
Good seeing you, Russell. Good seeing you.
Item thirteen, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Consider accepting the public improvement district petition from Bean Bow Homes LLC Windmill Crossing. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, council, this is what we've, this is one of the things we've all been waiting for, for our public improvement district.
The pit.
The pit, yes, for the uh, Bean Bow Homes Windmill Crossing. Um, very simply, tonight, all I need you to do is do a motion and a vote, second and a vote, to accept the petition.
Mary Ding, is that her name?
Mary Petty. And she will, and she will be here probably in a month on February thirteenth, because February thirteenth, we're actually going to do the public hearing.
Okay.
But tonight, all you need to do is just say, we, the city of Odessa, accept the petition from Bean Bow. That's all we're doing.
All right.
Very simple.
Uh, any discussion? If not, whoever makes the motion.
Move approval.
To accept.
To accept the pit. Motion to accept the pit.
Motion to accept the bid.
We have a motion by councilmember Heaney to accept the pit. We have a second by councilmember Thompson. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passing, you gotta have a script for this group.
Yes, yes.
Hold up sides like they do on the sidelines.
Item fourteen, consider authorizing Kaylee Banda for finance, finance director to engage in the contract with Weaver to conduct an audit.
And you thought I was gonna leave before I, before I got up here to talk? Yes, so good evening once again. I am presenting the consideration for the engagement with Weaver for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit.
One year. One year. City manager?
One year.
One year.
Yes. We are all on the same page, and we've had those conversations, uh, Mr. Beckmeyer and, and the finance department. So this will be for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Ms. Banda, like I told everybody, it may not be your fault, but you may take the blame if we think it don't go the way we want it to go.
Super.
Counsel, do we have any discussion? Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept item fourteen as presented by, to authorize Kaylee Banda for finance director to engage with contract with Weaver to conduct the audit. So motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember, uh, Matto, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Vasquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passing, yes. Ordinance is item fifteen, consider repealing Article eleven dash four downtown infrastructure facade grants of the city of Odessa. First approval. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, council, I'm gonna make this as simple as I possibly can. Back in twenty nineteen, what occurred was the policies of the facade and infrastructure grant was codified. And you never make policies law. Policies are policies because you want them to be fluent. You want them to be fluid. You want them to be able to do what you want to with them. So what we're gonna do tonight, um, if you decide to, is uh, to decodify the policies for ODC, the infrastructure and facade grants. So it will go back to being a policy rather than the law. If that makes any sense.
City manager?
Well, based on some conversations and confusion that I heard from people outside today, I want to be clear, we're not doing away with the grants.
No, we're, we're making it easier to get grants.
We're making it where, putting it where it belongs.
I heard that.
In policy.
We're taking away a layer of bureaucracy.
We're putting it in policy because what has happened is people have had to sit on their hands waiting on things to happen. When their contractors are ready to go, they can be doing business and all this, but they couldn't move forward.
And again, it goes back to what, what you're gonna do tonight, hopefully, is decodify a law which should have just remained a policy. With, to be fluid, where you can change it, and ODC can continue to do its infrastructure and facade grants. Those are gonna be even better once you do this.
Takes us out of.
Takes you out of the game on this. Takes the bureaucracy away, another level taken away.
Counsel, any discussion, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for consideration of repealing Article eleven dash four downtown infrastructure facade grants of the city of Odessa. This is first approval. Have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Heaney, second by councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passing, yes. We're moving on to miscellaneous. Item sixteen, create a committee to review hotel uh, occupancy tax hot funds, hot fund committee for review application. Mr. Beckmeyer.
Okay, in line with what I was saying earlier about going the extra mile to make sure that hot funds are allocated properly, we'd like to create a review committee, very small committee, to look at these applications before they come in, make sure that they are uh, they fall in line with what they need to be. And it's a committee that we'd like to staff with good qualified people that have been involved in the past. Obviously, we need someone from finance, either Kaylee Banda or her designee. Uh, we'd like to ask legal, ask Dan Jones to be on the committee. I've approached councilman Thompson, and he's agreed that he would serve on the committee. And then I would like somebody from the uh, city manager's office, uh, either deputy city manager Burnell or a designee, perhaps even his new assistant, Christina Burns, who I would like to stand up and introduce to you all.
Yes.
Tonight. You see, I did that and made it fit into the agenda. Uh, she started with the city uh, on January second, and we gave her COVID on January third.
Oh, no.
She came back. We're excited to have her, and we're so glad to have her here to help take on some of that.
What a great welcoming gift.
But that is uh, that would be my recommendation.
Counsel, do we have any comments on that?
The only thing I would like to say is that, um, observing some of the software used at Discover Odessa, uh, they can put in a person or a, that entity in there and see how it affects the hot funds.
Well, what, what, no, yeah, but this would, what they do is they will walk through s- someone through how to apply. What has happened in the past has been the uh, I guess, how would it say? There, there's, there's what the money should be spent. Then there's the gray area. And for a long time, we've been operating outside of that gray area. And so in the past, councils have been allocating this money, and nobody's been reporting. So we don't know, none of the council here have been able to say, well, has this organization uh, basically brought in the heads and beds that they were supposed and things of that nature outside of what they're using it for? The purpose of this allocation is to put heads and beds. It takes more than seven dollars to create one dollar for hot funds. And so we need a lot of coming in. We've never, there has been a mechanism for quite some time to be able to review if everybody's in compliance. So um.
And when, when somebody brings an application and drops it in front of you all.
Yes.
You don't have time to take and say, yes, no. You don't have the law in front of you and all of this. This committee can do that footwork.
Yes.
We, we had to go through quite a few applications this year and make sure that it was really right after they were, had been approved. We don't want that to happen.
Yes.
Well, just two years ago, I, you know, we weren't getting that information, and when Monica Shauna was at the chamber, so we asked Monica to start putting, because they can track it. And remember that?
Yeah, we asked her to, and we start throwing a lot of people out.
We threw a lot of people out because they didn't put any heads and beds, the same software, addressing, yeah. Well, that's not really, that's, yeah, that's, they, they can track it.
And, and a lot of people didn't know how to go through this process. And so that's one thing.
Give him some money.
We, we, we're contracting with the chamber. I said, look, we need to get them to work. And they started, uh, we get, we started seeing a little success, but we still gotta go another further step, and we need to commit to that with this. I really would do. Thank you for, for applying that and doing that. Counsel, do we have any questions, any comments, uh, for city manager about the, the committee?
I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Matto.
Second.
Second by councilmember Heaney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passing, yes. Now we're coming to the favorite part for our city secretary, Ms. Aguilar.
Okay, for, going to the second page on the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District. Susan Dentry has agreed to serve. For the Odessa Development Corporation, David Bhutan has agreed to serve, as well as Jeff Russell.
Ms. Secretary, do I need, uh, Mr. Bhutan as District Three Councilman? Do I need to recommend him or is he automatically on by accepting?
No, you have to make a, a, a motion.
I make a motion that they.
Let her, let her finish.
Okay.
For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Carlos Garcia, for, he comes from member Cornell's position.
Carlos Garcia?
That's for Anthony Bolton.
This is Anthony Bolton? Carlos Garcia?
Yes, and he does meet the qualifications to serve on the board.
Okay. That's it?
And for the zoning board of adjustment, Kyle Newton.
Okay.
Has agreed to serve.
Okay, okay. So we need a motion. And we, Mr. Vasquez, uh, do we, do we, wanted to go them all at one time, or do we want to do them as a whole?
One time would be good.
So uh, for Midland, Odessa Urban Transit District, uh, Susan Dentry, do I have a motion?
Uh, so moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Matto. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by councilmember Heaney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passing, yes. Uh, for Odessa Development Corporation, I need a motion for David Bhutan, 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 Jeff, and Jeff Russell. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by councilmember Heaney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passing, yes. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, uh, Carlos Garcia to replace Anthony Bolton. This is a District Four. Councilman, a motion by councilmember.
Yes, most of them.
And a motion by councilmember Cornell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Taking by councilmember Heaney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passing, yes. Zoning Board of Adjustments, Kyle Newton. This is uh, District Three. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Vasquez for Kyle uh, Newton on zoning board of adjustments. Do I have a second? Second by councilmember Heaney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passing, yes. Item eighteen, since there is no more business before the city council, I have a motion by councilmember Shawna. I have a second by councilmember Vasquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye.